I guess I would make the motion then, Mr. Chairman, to accept the minutes with the exception of those lines. And one eight five two one delay the fees taken until such a time as you have a chance others to look that over for sure. There's also.
I have a motion in a second.
I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes, as long as we're looking into this.
Ravenscroft?
Yeah.
Bliss?
Okay, we need to go over the minutes from the December twenty-second, twenty sixteen emergency meeting. Guess I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as they are. Second.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, now we need a vote.
Letts?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to claims for approval.
Yes, I have question on the, on the owl's lock and safe. Where's that?
The locks were to change for the office.
And there's P.O. and Ken done that?
What's that?
Was, was there a P.O. and Ken done that?
No.
Who done that?
Was advised by the Sheriff's Department to do that because we had employees walk out, we didn't know who had keys or what, Jim.
Uh, well, then I have a problem with it, yes. There's no city officials to have the, uh, power to draw warrants off of the village funds without going through the board first. Is that, do we have the Sheriff's Department represented here?
Yes.
He's questioning us having the locks changed after employees left. He's saying we can't do that.
Well, our ordinance says you can't do it.
Uh, well, I'd have to look at that and I could give you our opinion after I looked at the ordinance.
Did, I just want to know if you guys actually told them to do it.
Well, if they had security issues, I would, I mean, we need to tell anybody to change their lock.
Part that embezzled from those any of the lock. They were the same lock from there.
Yes, different people.
We also contacted Roundtree and Ask him to, and.
The concerns I had and those concerns I expressed, so I guess probably this was dealt with potentially sensitive information that may exist regarding employees, and that was kind of my concern. You know, all, all that being said, I understand that, except for if we're not gonna go by our codes and rules, then we just won't throw the book away. So, there you go, we have it. And there again, I'm one out of three, so do what you wish.
Guess we need a motion to approve these claims for approval.
I make a motion to approve the claims as, as they are.
I'll second it. Now, we need a vote.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes. Okay, now we have the sheriff's report.
You can, I'll just stand back there.
That's fine, Raleigh.
Um, I apologize, I didn't mention the sheet, I've been on the eastern side of the state today, and, oh, you do have it? All the facts are good. Um, I can tell you as far as our, uh, our, what we spend as far as patrol time was well above our monthly average, we got like a hundred and sixty-some hours of patrol time. As far as the yearly average on the contract here, we're way above. Additionally, I'm happy to report now we have four deputies living in Sutherland, we just gained another one, and he's a good aide, I think he was just here. Getting back to the locks thing, I, I'm sure I probably did tell them to change locks as when asked for advice on security issues, I probably gave a lot of advice that I do for any typical business when they come and have concerns. I'm not on either side, the sheriff's office isn't on either side, when you ask me a question, you probably expect an answer, so I gave one, and it would have been to change locks. If you had a village ordinance, I didn't know about none, I apologize for that.
Well, we had ordinances on people leaving their jobs too, so whatever.
What are those ordinances?
Well, they're, they're there. There's protocol for it to happen. There's protocol for you leaving your job.
Yeah. Any, any problems or anything after?
Ah, Raleigh, sorry, we got off track a little bit there. No, not so far, I, I think.
Please, please call if you do, I'll be around.
And, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'll just make a comment that it wasn't in the ordinance, but it was standard office, office policy, when somebody left office, they actually changed the combination of the safe, 'cause when I left office, the safe combination changed, it was just automatic.
Well, it's any, any place, any security, but, thanks, Ray. Okay. Announce to you people that we will not discuss the abrupt resignation of the sheriff's department deputy clerk, we will be following the agenda. When we come to any agenda item, the board will accept public comments for one minute.
Point of order there, Mr. Chairman, you probably need to exclude your executives, that's from the promiscuity.
We're not there yet.
That's not a, that's not a legal deal to have on this.
Well, we've discussed it already with our attorney, and we're not there yet, Jim, we're trying to move forward with this meeting. Okay, I believe it's the third reading for ordinance six thirteen, increase sewer rates.
This shall service the third reading of ordinance six thirteen and ordinance of the village of Sutherland, Nebraska, amending the Sutherland Village Code, ordinance number five seventy, by amending section twelve one oh three, to change sewer rates. To provide that the provisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the village of Sutherland, and to provide the date that the ordinance shall take effect.
Guess we need a motion in a second. To accept this ordinance.
So we go to the back after the third reading, is that correct?
Yeah, I hope we go to the end, yep. This is the third reading, right? But I think we need to, we need to look into it, and figure out what at all is going on, so we know. Probably table it.
Mr. Chairman?
And then, yeah, so we may just need to table for right now.
Man, I just want to bring that in here.
We, the date's wrong on it now, we need a motion to amend that ordinance. Right, that's our biggest problem.
Correct, so when drafted, uh, just a couple months ago now, December one was the date, it would, it would go into effect weird now, past December one, uh, since the board elected two free ratings, so.
Mr. Chairman, what projects do you have coming up that would indicate a need to raise the sewer rate?
The sewer project that's going on or has been completed.
That should have been budgeted in last year's budget?
Thanks, Diane, you're done?
Yes.
Um, the village board had a water and sewer rate analysis through rural water, which we normally do every three to four years, they go through all the finances, and part of this is the sewer plant, the, they have to do that project, we did, we couldn't set rates till the project was completely finished, it didn't get finished till about July or August. And, so in order to pacify this federal or state, how we got our funds there, the rates gotta be X, Y, and Z to make sure they make the payment same as the water, they gotta be there to, to make the bond payments and everything like that, that's a state requirement, um, these are the rates of rural water, because you gotta, you have to pay the bond and still have authority, because water and sewer has to be self-sustaining, that's where the rate increases come from, and that's where the recommendations came from.
So was the project budgeted for to be covered in last year's budget?
The project was in both, we had, I did it both years because it crossed timelines, but the total overall deal was, when this first came about, the state said, okay, we're gonna have to raise sewer rates thirty dollars. Okay, when the first amount of money, well, the village board, I believe, raised them ten dollars, because we thought we could, well, sadly didn't, and with all this, I think this is another three dollars is what it is, so it's, it's nothing like what the state originally said we needed to raise it to, so.
Thank you.
We're going to move, John?
We need a motion to change the date on it, to February first, I guess. It would take effect February first, if it's voted in.
I'll make a motion to change the date up to February first, because the sewer ordinance will take effect instead of December first of two thousand sixteen, February first of two thousand seventeen.
Need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we need a vote.
Bliss?
No.
Ravenscroft?
Yeah.
I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes.
We can table this, we can do it for the camera, or does this have to be done now?
Well, we just moved it in.
You just did it.
We just moved it in, I said yes, but.
We, we voted to change the date, but we didn't vote to.
That is correct.
The bond.
That was amendment two.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't vote on the.
Yeah, I guess you're right, we didn't vote on the ordinance, we voted on amend the ordinance.
Yeah, you're right.
So that.
Yeah.
Just for public information, can you tell me if you know now what the recommendation of the sewer will be from the basic to the basic, did I hear you're gonna raise it three dollars?
Uh, I mean, I, I don't know the exact figure here, but it's like two dollars and fifty cents or two dollars and twenty-five cents, I, I don't know what the exact figure, I don't have that information showing me.
I think we may need to table this too, or whatever it needs, so we can look into it more.
Okay, and the same with the water?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's coming next, so.
I'll make a motion to table it. Ordinance six thirteen, yeah, where there's.
What was that?
Just for purposes, how, how long?
Uh, until, uh, February first. Well, February first, we may, we better make it March, yeah.
Yeah, March first would give us two meetings to do it.
I'll second.
Yeah, table, yep, re- amend that, okay, when we come back, all right, could save time though. Okay, we need a vote then.
I second.
Do you, do you want us for a second, we need a vote?
I've already messed up the voting order, so I'm gonna try it over again. Bliss? I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes. Okay, let's table, now we need to go to ordinance six fourteen, increase water rates. We gotta, we gotta, or if we're not tabled, we.
It doesn't have a date?
It doesn't.
Yeah, it does, it has that same date. Well, we can just table that till March first, make motion to table it to March first. Making that motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, and I don't want to, should we not perform the third reading of it, or are we just gonna table it and start from scratch?
Well, we'll probably table and read the third reading at March, yeah.
March first, yes.
On this water issue, I'd like to get with Bob or somebody, get with Bob, and a couple of us get with Bob and find out why that fifty thousand's been moved all been for the past three or four years too, and how they gotta raise this, and since we've been moving that money, I don't understand that very well, so maybe we can get ahold of Bob, and he kind of follow that or something.
They're still in their audit, so they will be back next week. And, I didn't have a second?
I'll second.
I didn't touch the first.
Uh, Ray.
I'm at, yeah, I'm at the motion.
Now, we need a vote.
I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
Okay, we have the resolution twenty sixteen, uh, eight zero one, the Department of Road Agreement.
Um, I would recommend holding off on this a little longer. The Department of Road is supposed to come here and, and check in the driveway for signs, it might be a problem, they haven't gone back with me yet.
Right.
If there's another issue behind the village, probably need to write them a letter and request this call, that East of Town needs to be upgraded, they get it at one time, but they wouldn't approve it at that time, but if they're gonna throw that again, they would get through this guy.
Right.
But if we get it on village letterhead or something, and Tom has, he did a study on that, didn't he?
So, we need to have Tom and stretch Tom to.
Well, Tom probably should write one, being the engineer, probably go with board, probably need to write one.
One, two.
Just because, but so, we gotta check on this sign driveway stuff too, because if there's stuff there recording this contact, they're gonna make us liable for pitching out.
We need a motion to.
Table that?
Table it till we can look into it, or to, to write a letter to the state.
Wouldn't it be best if we got the state up here to actually talk to us, because I don't think they have yet, have they?
No, and they're not getting.
I don't know if you write a letter, you might ask them, so come and explain what they're doing.
Because, I mean, myself, Robert, and them down about all this stuff, as far as I know, they don't have any intention of me, but I guess they, they might if you ask them.
Not, that, I'm aware of, I mean, I, they're supposed to be blast, that I know about this, you know, maybe, and then they will come through, provides additional information. Like, um, that, yeah, that's all I know.
Basically, a lot of my abilities don't go along with this, but whenever they is, they just don't do nothing to time.
Then we need some of that.
That's what they, they told us at that meeting.
So I guess we can try to write them a letter. Yeah, make, need a motion to authorize somebody to, to write a letter, I guess the Board of Trustees can be involved in it, and Ken and Linda. Guess we need a motion to come up sometime, and we can talk to Tom too, I guess, to help with it. Motion. Let's have one to write a letter for us with.
I think it'd be good to have Tom involved in the thing.
Yeah, I think so.
We will, because, we will, because we'll get Tom, I mean, he's like I said, he did the, the, since he knows what size the cover's supposed to be in that anyway, so.
Yeah, I think we need Tom and Ken and, and probably a Board of Trustees member or two, whatever.
I'll make a motion, uh, put those three, four people to write a letter, tell them, talk to them about cover, and their signs and everything going through town, so we get our board something.
Right, because we don't wanna miss it. Our main sewer, or cylinder nature.
I'll second it.
For my clarification, we are just leaving this on the agenda, and we're writing a letter to the department?
Yeah, Department of Roads.
Okay, motion second.
One more below, and a, or maybe. Got that? Okay, I need a vote there.
Letts?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Okay, we have Will coming here. We're following.
And we're following his own, I placed in last meeting about the gallons, and talked to Twin Flat ID as far as the mortuary, the names were already irrigated acres, it's not a problem, so.
So we just need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for this.
All right.
This is over behind these drain bins over here?
Yes, it's gonna be irrigating, it's probably the left side.
Give me a second.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, we need a vote, whenever you're ready.
Letts?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second, well, from that, for Gary and Jerry Funk, I don't want South Street. You see a problem with this, Ken?
No, it's not, it's not a problem with that area, it's, loads of water, it's.
It's fifty gallons, and then I did that.
That's an excellent.
Yeah, that's an excellent, yeah, so I guess it beats all the requirements, doesn't it?
As far as we're concerned, yeah.
Death don't matter, death isn't an issue, really?
Not as far as us, I mean, basically, these permits here are for, so we have knowledge of them, they still gotta fill out state permits and everything, they're well builders, they gotta draw whatever they need to do. This is more basically to control when we have wells inside of town, but what areas.
So if we don't see a problem, then we just need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept the well permit for Gary and Jerry Funk.
I second it.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Letts?
Yes. Okay, we need to talk about the building at nine thirty first street that we had talked about before. Of, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, a concern with you declaring it as surplus property and asking for bids at the next meeting without having meetings in between to, to discuss it. You went directly for a sealed bid for the next meeting?
No, we're, this is all confused from the meeting on the fourteenth of December, we need to discuss it now, and then decide what we're gonna do.
Well, then, why in the minutes do you have that the bids will be open publicly January eleventh?
I, that's the way it was supposed to come out back when it happened, but we're gonna have to redo it.
Okay, that was just my concern, the way the minutes were, and you didn't, and you didn't declare a change in the minutes just earlier in the meeting, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we're gonna advertise, and we will have open, or it'll be an auction style.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need to actually put an advertisement in the paper to advertise for an auction style for the property, or deem it surplus property, I think. Yeah, so we need to actually put an advertisement in the paper to advertise for an auction style for the property, or deem it surplus property, I think, did we? Damn, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I'm pretty sure, that's why we went to the auction style.
I have questions, it's been a long time, are we advertising for bids, or are we advertising to hold an auction on the date?
Yeah, advertising to hold an auction, yes.
One thing, Rory, I guess I need to ask you, I know we had property like that, we did before, and they had to be a real estate agent to auction it, that's why we had to, they had to do it, I believe.
That's.
Because it's real estate, it falls on our real estate license.
Um, I'll have to look at that, I don't know.
Do we need to?
One seventy-eight for that.
One, and one, okay, do we need to table this to the next meeting?
That your guys call, but it may be impossible.
Yeah, I think we just need to table this till we have everything correct, and then we'll advertise for the bids, I don't think it's a.
For auction.
For auction, yes. Yes, yeah.
Are you gonna have an EPA report on that, since that bank was in the back?
I don't think we have to.
Yeah, you have to.
That may have already been done.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of.
There shouldn't be any, I mean, because there's never any problems, there's, I don't know why there's no evaluation.
EPA never, they made us do a hundred year sample and build our store, so let's have that, call the EPA and have them find us a, an evaluation of that.
I know they sampled a lot of the gas stations, old gas stations.
I think that one was covered, but I can't sort of play back, this has been ten years ago.
We owned it ten years.
I understand that. And they put test wells on them islands too.
Yeah, they did.
Ken, didn't they, didn't, when the EPA came through like eight years ago, right when I came on, about doing the highway thirty, the Lincoln Highway thing, there was a lot of that. They tested a bunch of the wells, that one over here.
Well, they had a bunch of monitoring wells that they had in the concrete, and I know it was tapped in off and on.
It should have been already done.
And I know the ones to the east part was done.
Well, the east part, and I know the one, the car works were done, and I'm thinking there was a well up in front of that one also, but I can't sort of.
But we can contact them, I mean, that's not a problem. Uh, we will, I guess.
Just table it.
Table it, yeah.
Get some things done, get done.
So we need a motion to table this for now.
I'll make a motion to table it, till we get it figured out. March first.
Yeah, probably worth it. That should give us enough time. I'm pretty sure we're gonna find that was already done, but.
I'll check, we need to.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second the table motion.
Okay, then we need a vote.
Les.
Yes.
I inspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Okay, drainage issues on North County Road, I don't know if we're even, I mean, I know it's a problem, we have to, and we gotta do something about it. You've got anything to do on it, Ken, or just need to keep it on the agenda?
They could either be kept on or just put back on in April or something like that.
Right, so we can try to correct some of these problems. So we.
It could be just left on there, so we didn't get forgot too.
Right.
It's what they've done before the pattern.
Okay, we got an accident report then.
That's what I have down in my shop.
Okay.
Quality we kind of follow down there.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys want to act on this or anything, or do some change here, or do you want to look into it some more?
I might do some change, I guess, that's for fire department, maybe, do all the kind of things.
This would be any employees of the village, so yes, it would cover them if they're on a call.
So I don't have a problem with any of this, but maybe we should research it a little bit, and we might have some corrections. That's a good guideline to go by anyhow to.
Yeah. Leave it on there?
Yeah, let's just leave that on there, and we will do some research. Proclamation, school choice week. What do we need to do there, Brenda?
I suggest you have the, Rory.
Because we need to.
Approve it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, the board so desires to approve it, I, I was requested to basically put this in this form, I've done so, it's up to you on it, you wanna do anything with it?
I guess we need a, a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept this proclamation.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, now we need a vote.
I inspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Les.
Yeah.
Okay. Village employees officials, Board of Trustees official resignation. That would be John Sauer. I have to have a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
I guess I'll second it.
And can we discuss, I'd like to put something in the paper for thanking him for his two years of service. We need a motion to do that.
Well, you have a motion on it.
One other thing, I have the superintendent of the school, when they take in resignations, they make sure that they're signed, not that they're just typed out. Is there a signed copy, you put a bill?
I have it here.
You got it? He says it just looks better overall.
The, the way the orders shall be in writing, but that, that one does have a signed.
We need a vote.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
I inspire.
Yes.
Les.
Yes.
Okay, Village Pur Treasure resignation. Oh, okay, yeah, we need to make notice, public notice and vacancy of board, and. Take letters of advertising.
For purposes of testaments later on, but give public notice of vacancy by causing to be published newspaper or general circulation with the village, or by posting in three public places in the village, the office vacated in the length of the unexpired term, I'm not sure how the board wants to, get it in one or the other.
Okay. We, we give public notice, do we want to do it? Post it, three places, newspaper.
We're trying to get both, one, two, nine?
Three public places, so just, just.
Post it, in our normal public places, yes. Yes.
John, I have my letter for interest, right now, would you be willing to accept it?
Yeah, we're gonna advertise for it.
All right.
Yes, uh, if you'd leave it, if you'd leave it with us, uh, we will be taking letters.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we need a motion to post the vacancy of the.
Do we have, do we need to do it on a deputy too, if we make one motion and one vote?
One's elected official, that's a.
Oh, elected, oh, for Sauer.
John Sauer, yeah, it's we're on his, we gotta make a motion to post it in three places.
I'll make a motion to post it in three places for the, uh, elected.
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Les.
Yeah.
I inspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes. Okay, now we need the Village Pur Treasure resignation. Guess we need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of a known court flash treasure.
I'll second it.
Do we have this signed, you know?
Different rules for elected officials.
I'm trying to be transparent for the village, so. Be a little concerned.
Thought we understood it, this was good enough.
Electoral official, yeah, specific statement.
Right, this is definitely a. So I guess we gotta. Motion and a second.
Can we have discussion on this?
I stated that when we started.
Okay, do I have a minute?
Yeah.
I'll try to talk fast.
Let's keep it in the direction of this resignation, that's what it's about.
I believe that that's what this is about as well. I have a confession to make, had I, had the village board been on my ballot, I would have voted for the three new board members, or the two new board members and the returning board members, in the hopes that you would be the leaders to preserve our community and lead it into the future. Sadly, that hope has not been borne out, you are now accountable to the citizens of Sutherland for the very serious damage that your unauthorized action has done to the village government. Sam and Heather, the clerk treasurer and deputy clerk, are very good at their jobs, they have modernized and streamlined the bookkeeping and governance of the village of Sutherland and brought our community into the twenty-first century. But even if they were mediocre at their jobs, they would have been unable to do as much damage to the village as you three have done since your first meeting on December fourteenth, less than thirty days. You have made grave mistakes, but the character of a man isn't judged by the mistakes he makes, mistakes are a way of life and hopefully an opportunity to learn and grow, character is judged by how those mistakes are handled. It is said if you find yourself in a hole, that the first course of action is to stop digging, you have dug a deep hole for yourselves and for the village of Sutherland, and it is time to stop digging. It is time to face the mistakes you have made because you didn't have the sense to sit back and learn your jobs before going rogue.
That's good enough, you're not even talking about the resignation of these people.
I say that you should reject.
So let's move on.
I say that you should reject their resignations.
Let's move on, we need a vote.
His question, in the circumstances behind the resignation, that changed for us.
We're not here for the circumstances, we're here, because we gotta move on.
I say reject their resignations.
Reject them.
They walked out.
They, they left their jobs.
Why?
They left this town in a bad situation.
Why don't you ask the two people who caused it, why?
I think we need.
Chairman Lutz.
Yes, Tom.
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, Tom.
My name's Tom Kennedy, and I don't live right in Sutherland, I live just north of town, but nonetheless, I've kind of been aware of what's going on, and recognize all this dissent for no reason. It, uh, what's going on in my mind is those people resigned of their free will, they weren't asked to resign, they quit on their own, and, and I liked saying, I liked the deputy clerk, they were great at what they did, but they did resign of their own volition.
And there was nobody ever judged their job.
That's right, and as far as the board wanting to see the benefit packages and that sort of thing, I would have done the same thing. The reason I'm here tonight and why I'm speaking is because of, of I inspire's wife, Cindy, she dropped by the other night to drop some medicine off for me, and she come in immediately into my chair and started apologizing to me for how abrupt she had been with me. I called, I was gonna tease Dave a little, ask him to pay his face green when it comes down to the next meeting, just to have a little fun with it.
Right.
But she was just absolutely, not irate, but overexcited about all this, and it don't amount to nothing, it's nothing at all, it's what it is, it's a damn.
Okay, Tom.
Internet.
Better shut your.
A lot of innuendos that aren't true.
Thank you, Tom.
Nothing true.
Steve.
Will the complaints be made public, copies of the complaints be made public?
This resignation?
No, the complaints.
What complaints, Steve?
The complaints.
We're talking about a resignation here, Steve.
The complaints that you stated that there was against our clerk.
I guess a quick before we discussed any of them, so we need to move on.
I asked you to discuss it, and you were.
We need to move on, it was scheduled to be discussed at the meeting.
Are there copies, are there copies of the complaints?
We need to move on, this is not about a complaint, this is about.
Are there copies of the complaints?
Steve, come on, answer it, Steve.
Answer the question.
We're accepting the resignation.
You should be rejecting the resignations.
We need to move on, let's move on, we need a vote.
Les.
No, I, you got one where the Mr. Kennedy got his say.
I inspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Okay, we need to go on, Village Deputy Clerk resignation.
Well, I would like to speak on this one as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I think I have about a minute left. I agree that there is a time to review employee performance, wage and benefit packages, overtime and other matters, but that time is during the annual budget proceedings. John, you just sat through these proceedings, I think the village, um, year starts October first, so you have just gone through the budget, and the overtime, and the wages, and the benefits. That was the time to voice these concerns about what was going on, you were also in a position that you could have enlightened the new board members as to the finances of the village of Sutherland, because you were privy to that during that process. So now we have to move forward, and again, I would counsel that the way to move forward is to admit your mistakes, to refuse to accept the resignations of the clerk treasurer and the deputy clerk, to apologize to them for backing them into the corner and forcing their resignations, and to pledge to put the well-being of the village of Sutherland ahead of.
the well-being of the village of Sutherland ahead of your own personal interests and prejudices. Humbly ask Samantha and Heather to come back to their jobs and put this sad chapter behind the village of Sutherland.
We say no one forced resignation, so I come to you and Mr. Rogers, try to show up in the office to sign a form and harass him to the point of his dying.
Really?
I thought your problem didn't exist before you took, you took you as chairman of the board.
You wanna see some proof, personal proof.
You were talking about overtime with them when you came in, which is not the place to type your name.
You know what? We're not talking about, this is not what we're here about. We're about these resignations. So now we need a motion to accept this resignation. Village Deputy Clerk resignation.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of the village's deputy clerk.
I second.
Okay, we need a vote.
Einspire? Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
You already know.
Can you say for the record and the recording, please?
No.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that.
Okay. We have here a letter from the village attorney. You wanna?
I don't.
I agree on this.
I think it speaks for itself. I mean, if you have any questions, may I?
Talk to you.
But I didn't provide notice before.
You guys can call him or whatever. At this point, it is.
Can this letter be made public for public information?
It is a letter to the board in, in general. It's not, no, attorney-client purpose, it's just not attached to this law.
So if anybody came in and requested a copy of this, I charged them 25 cents and give them a copy of it.
All your normal procedures, please.
Thank you.
I view this as a court record.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What progress have you been making on accepting or extending the contracts with Tom Borbelo and with our attorney?
Well, we haven't had a lot of time to do that lately. Hopefully, we can do that. I've been talking to Ken. We've been discussing things. It will be done by the next meeting.
What, what is going to be done by the next meeting?
We will discuss with Ken. What we've talked about, overtime, benefit packages, that will all still be done.
Don't those have to be voiced and talked about during your meeting?
It will be, but we haven't had that meeting yet.
You have until the end of the month, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Unless we extend it, but I don't think there will be any need for that. It will be taken care of. Okay. Authorized acting clerk Linda to access bank account information and process transactions. We need a.
Motion? I, I don't know. Do you have you talked to the bank?
Tell me, need to make a motion to send the meetings to the bank so that the, the males, they just need to see them minutes. Okay, I think that's all we need.
Just make sure you put in the minutes who's authorized to go on the account and who you're taking off, because there are several accounts, and then we have the ECorp and the ICS accounts as well.
Okay. Linda?
I request that it be made in the form of a motion that a letter be sent to the bank authorizing me to access information and process electronic transactions. That's my request to cover me.
Yes.
So you want to make a motion to approve her to do the ECorp and the ICS transfers, probably.
Okay, yeah, let's.
I guess what I would recommend to fix all of this is a motion, as she indicated, and as part of that motion, direct that a letter be sent to the bank, for authority, say. Does that make sense? So it'll be in the minutes, and then a letter will also go through that.
Oh, I make a motion to, uh, get that all done.
And as long as you state what you want, I mean, we're fine. I mean, you know, but just, the signature cards then will remain with the same signers on it? No changes with that?
Yes, there'll be changes because we're, Scott Myers will be coming off, John Sauer and Rob Money will be coming off, and Dave and Ray will be on it.
So make sure you put that in the minutes, the ones that are coming off and the ones that are going on, in addition to the ones that are already on there.
Okay. A motion or the letter?
Okay.
Make sure it's in your motion or your minutes.
A motion. Okay, we got motion to put Belinda, I think, right now.
I don't want to sign any cards.
Just to put you on the, on the count, right?
You're putting her on the ECorp to be able to do the billing, the billing for the utilities and the payroll?
Okay.
Which is what ECoria's, and she can transfer funds through that, but she, she's, I mean, she's not writing checks on any of the accounts.
Right. Nor does she want to. Okay, you got that. You just, Ray, Ray need to read that. Motion probably.
I like it really restated.
Yeah.
Motion to identify the persons being removed from the Adams Bank account cards, a motion to add the new persons to the cards unless the attorney has it worded better.
Okay.
And authorize Belinda to access and process.
Let's, let's do a motion right quick to remove the names, uh, we mentioned John Sauer, Scott Myers, and Rob Money.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. We need a second. Yeah, vote. That one isn't powerful yet.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Einspire?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to add.
I think if you look at the minutes on the 14th, both those motions were already made.
Yeah, I mean, they were on there, but we're just. Should have been on there and accepted already on the 14th.
They were.
We just needed to okay the minutes to add the new.
And that was there too. That was there, I think.
Yeah.
I believe, I remember reading that.
Yeah.
It would just be to add Belinda to be able to do the transfers, to be able to do the transactions that she needed. Not signing authorization for Belinda.
Well, we got a motion and everything for Beli, uh, well, no, we don't, yeah.
We went back to the ones from the 14th.
Right. So that was already okay. We just got, had to approve the minutes, so that should be good for the new, but we need Belinda. We need to add her in a motion to transfer funds and whatever on the bank accounts. Uh, I don't know what, did you write that all down, like Barbut told you?
I know what Barbut is needing to access. Basically, all I need to do is have access to the account information and author, and be allowed to process credit card payments and to the ECorp.
And we need to send them, send them the minutes, right?
Do you want it in the minutes, or would you like a letter written? You could do a letter, it's fine, too.
So a motion, a motion to send a letter to the bank to approve Linda. Right. All right, we just, we need a motion to send a letter to approve Linda onto the accounts.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll make the motion for Belinda to access the billing in the, in the minutes and a letter to approve all this from the village.
ECorp and the, and the ICS accounts.
Fantastic. Access accounts.
ICS accounts.
I'll second.
Now we need a vote. Kate? Pete?
I just have a quick question. Do I still need to have two of my library board members sign our bills then, since Belinda cannot sign them? Or will she be able to sign our bills?
Are two of the board members authorized to sign them? Are all, all the board?
Yes, but usually the clerk signs one, and then I have one board member sign.
Okay, well, the clerk doesn't wish to be on.
Have two board members?
I think there's a state statute that requires the village clerk to be with the library, the treasurer, whatever.
To, to sign that off?
Yeah. By state statutes, you can have your attorney check it.
Okay. That's through the library.
See, yeah, the library, the library is completely different from the village.
Yeah.
There's other authorized signers on there besides the board members.
But Frank, Steve, and the clerk has to be.
The treasurer has to approve the billings.
Has to prove it or has to sign it, or?
Part of, yeah, the treasurer at this point has to provide a monthly report to the board in regards to everything. I think that's what you were asking about. Is there something specific you want me to look at?
It is a state statute that the treasurer, village treasurer is on the library accounts. On temporary.
Right. But we probably need to put the temporary on the library's account so we can pay their bills. Correct? So we need a, yeah, Steve?
Has the, has Belinda been bonded yet?
Yeah, since we're done the next day, once she was.
Yep. Let's ask her.
I know, uh, we never got that vote from that. Did we get a vote?
No, we need to get the letter. Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
What was it again?
The letter to allow me to access transactions and information regarding the union accounts. Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes. Okay, now. The library. Need a motion to put the clerk, Belinda, as treasurer on a signature card for the library, correct? Just have to have her sign.
And, and removing.
And removing the other two clerks off of that. We need to do two motions.
I make a motion to remove clerk slash treasurer and the deputy clerk off the cards for the library.
Now, second. Okay, we need a vote.
Les?
You take it off?
Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to put.
I make a motion to put the. Acting secretary. On the library clerk.
Acting clerk on the library board.
Do we have to make her an active treasurer first before we add her in there, or not?
Well. They, they are separated in the book, and they are separate positions.
Well, we can make a motion to make her active treasurer.
See, with my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the emergency meeting just appointed her as, as temporary.
Right. So we need to appoint her for treasurer. A motion to appoint her as treasurer, one of those three.
Well, I make a motion to. Like lending. Acting treasurer.
Temporary treasurer?
Yeah, there you go.
I thought that these things had to be on your agenda for the meeting to act on.
Okay, well, we can't do that right now, then, so.
We can make a motion to amend the agenda.
That has to be done.
Twenty-four hours.
Yeah, you can't do that. You can't amend your agenda less than 24 hours.
Well, it's emergency.
So would the previous vote be null then with the library?
It's not on the agenda either.
That's correct. That would be, that would be above and beyond. The agenda is specific to bank account information and process transactions.
Okay, so we'll. Yes, the library board will have to take care of it, and we will get it on the agenda for next time, next meeting. Yeah.
Molly?
Should we make a motion to rescind the previous motions?
For purposes of clarity, the minutes, yes, we, we should. Somebody could vote in.
The library one's especially.
I have, there is no. I have to re, to remove the girls.
Okay.
Yes. To take them off the bank card, that would be a banking.
Correct. That would fall.
That could go.
Everything except the most recent motion to remove the former clerk and deputy clerk from.
That could go?
The library. That was beyond the scope of the notice of. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it would be proper at this point for a motion to rescind that.
The removal?
Yes.
And the appointment.
We need a motion to rescind.
I make a motion to rescind the last motion of moving the girls off the library.
Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Okay, so we just gotta get that advertised and put on the next agenda. The library issue. Yeah, that's the point, yeah. Okay, we need to go to the EMS, clear conference, fire rescue department. Three of you guys going to this?
There are three of us going to the medical conference room, Ray, me, and I, who are presenting our registration and paperwork. The department is taking it.
And this, we need to refund.
The department.
The department for the, for the $630. Okay, the whole $630.
And then we'll have motel room for Saturday night.
Okay.
EMTs related.
Okay, can you guys do a check on that or do we need to, do you know how much you're spending? Do we need to authorize a check?
Well, like we talked about, we can go and get paper on motel rooms and determine and bill, it's fine with us. And normally we do a direct bill from the, from the motel, but we waited too late to sign up to get to the motel that does the direct billing. So, which is all right, we got a lot cheaper place anyways.
So we.
Make a motion to.
Set, or a motion to pay.
The $630 back?
Yeah.
I make a motion to pay the, the, the public fire department. The amount is $630 for three people to attend the conference.
Now a second. And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Les.
Yes.
Einspire.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I guess this is the ambulance, it's not the next one in line, the rebuild valves on the comfort truck. Roger, you got that?
I don't have a written statement, this one's been across, I need that estimate. He said it could be around $2,000, there's 15 valves on it. Pretty much all of them are starting to bleed. The hard water heats up the bulb, it's inside there, it's made out of plastic. The outside is brass, but especially in the winter time, water bleeds by them, gets out into the hoses. So we gotta keep pulling hoses off of it, wrangling water out. So we need to see if I get it fixed.
But $3,000 should cover it.
That's an estimate. It could be a little more, it could be less. He said.
So we need a.
Make a motion to rebuild them?
Yeah, do we wanna go a little over that? Don't exceed, the motion to not exceed, uh, $3,200, $3,200 call, cover it, Roger? If it's a little more.
What's happening?
If we went $3,200, not to exceed $3,200.
I can't say, I mean, I don't know what's in there. I mean, the valves are all up, I need to be full panel, it's on the front of the truck. Some are electric.
We need a motion to, for some amount.
Put a lid on it.
Yeah, it has the, the motion maybe not to exceed $3,500.
I'll make a motion that, well, we might have to exceed it, but if we do, it'll have to come, they'll have to come back and.
Right, for further payment.
I'll make a motion that we don't exceed $3,500 for the rebuild repair on the valves of the comfort.
I'll second that.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Les.
Yes.
Einspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes. Okay, we have the ambulance report here.
This is for the year?
Yes.
This is for 2016.
I have that in my pockets.
This is the same one?
I didn't know that. Okay. Same ones. Pardon? No, these are for anybody, there's. You have one? Okay. Yeah, those, I guess I need, I need.
No, there's no.
No. All this is, is just facts, figures, what we've done throughout the year of 16. And this is going through our computer service we use, EMS billing and.
GNS.
GNS. It tells you, the first page is what kind of, uh, calls we went on and how many calls there, that we did. Total, we had 236 calls in 2016. And approximately 88 of the calls went to Hershey. And we cared with Norfai after 38 times. An interesting fact here, we haul 106 males and 100 females. And it says, or on page three or something, the average, or the ages of people that we haul. Most, or the, the highest one would have been at age 70 to 79. So it's just a lot of, a lot of facts and figures that were worth presenting here. And the business day of the week is Saturday. Of course it is. And then the last page, uh, you guys got that?
No, we don't have that one.
Okay. Okay. We will keep that last page, it just, just tells our own people how many runs and stuff they've gone on, so.
It shows our ambulance services here.
Well, we try to be easy down.
I took the number of people and the number of calls that they run, took it times two just to get a guess to the man-hours. So, um, if you take the man, the number of people, 829 for all of the calls, and you take that time to two hour, which is a rough estimate of a call, and take us. You're looking at 1,658 volunteer man-hours that comes out of our department. That is for ambulance only. That is not the fire, that is not training, that is not meeting, that is, any else like that. This is just for the ambulance.
And that is two times the 236?
Eight, no, 829 because we get 236 runs. That is up substantially from the year before, that's a lot of runs. If you figure there's 355 days in the year, that's, that's a lot of days that were out.
In 15, we had 191, and in 14, we had 194. So we're way up from the last two years.
We're hoping the trend doesn't stay that way, but this year's started out with bang, so I'm not so sure it's not gonna stay that way. We do have some great new members. We are very, very excited to get some new members on. We have some people making EMP class. We're praying to get some young blood in there as EMS, 'cause we're all getting a little older. You're right up there with me, honey. Um, and we've got some new ones that are just coming on and not in the class, but are showing very potential for wanting to show up on the runs and learn. We're hoping to get some young blood.
Yeah, it's great to see some interest in the younger.
Yeah, I just printed these off because I thought they were very interesting facts of what we do. I like to see what kind of calls to go on, I like to, I like to see the days of the week, the times. I didn't do the time breakdown, but that, you can even do the times of the days that are more busy than others.
Okay, well, thank you guys, that's all you needed, wasn't it? That was just, your end report, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your service. Okay. Park Board.
Park, Park Board has forwarded a paper, recommendation for the following applicants' lifeguards for the 2017 spring session. Their names and wages are listed there and will be published in the meetings.
So we just, do we need to take this?
That, I mean, we usually have, I started out.
There's a few more.
It's a couple more than normal, but one of them's only going off to work weekends and evenings. And once they take classes, I mean, last year we were pretty short.
Really no more hours then, probably much, or?
No, hour-wise, I mean, it's not gonna change anything, there's still a set amount of people at work.
Right, so.
Just individual hours for people, maybe down two or three hours.
So we need to okay this, or motion approved? Need a motion to approve this? Do we need to do them individually or do them all? Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the lifeguards that the Park Board has ordered and seconded and motioned, as is here in the pay rates, as is.
Now a second.
Les.
Yes.
Einspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Okay, down here, the water's doing, water bills. What did we? Let's see about our water bill.
Our water bills went out late. You wanna waive the late fees?
Yeah, that's here next, I guess.
Water bills, they go out late, they went out on mistakes instead of the third.
We have a, advertise to waive the late fees for the month.
You might wanna do disconnects too.
Or you gotta waive disconnects and.
And late fees.
Late fees. I'll make a motion to waive the late fees and the disconnects.
Now a second.
Einspire.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Ravenscroft.
Yes.
Les.
Yes.
Okay, other new business, advertise for the clerk treasurer.
Motion authorized?
Yeah, motion authorized the clerk to advertise.
I make a motion authorized advertiser for clerk treasurer.
Now a second.
Do we have, do we want to sit time or not? Okay.
Yeah, we probably better put a time.
Yeah.
Would you have to amend that motion?
The motion was actually completed.
If we had a motion, then the motion can second. Yeah.
To the motion.
Should I amend that motion to?
Fifteenth of February.
Well, we have the temporary court till the end of February. Go to the end of February.
Extend it to the end of February?
Well, that's where our, our, that meeting, whatever that is, in February.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You have your temporary till the end of February, you probably want your nominees to be four, because you're gonna have to interview them.
Right.
So you'd like to have them probably take over for the end of February, or at the end of February.
At the end of February. That doesn't give us a lot of time then.
What's a month from now?
Yeah, that doesn't give us a lot of time to advertise.
Well, it could. We could extend Belinda for another month.
Sure.
I'll put that on the next agenda.
On the next, yes. Because we may need to do that, yes, Karen.
Can really background watch to know where you're gonna advertise at?
And, uh, local newspaper, for sure. Hurry your times.
Probably the Courier and the Telegraph.
And the Telegraph, yes. We can do that. Yeah. We need to, need to amend that.
What we do, so, okay, what we have, if I understand it correctly, the motion, created second there, to advertise, if someone would like to offer a friendly amendment to limit that until the eighth, you could accept it, and that would then be the motion.
Well, I'll amend it till what, fifteenth of February, be the cutoff date? To advertise for, or the last application. That would be right.
You don't have a meeting on the fifteenth, so you have to wait till the second. You do anything unless you're gonna schedule a, and you'll meet.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to, after we get the applications, interview and everything too, so.
Well, yeah, I understand, your next meeting's February eighth, not the fifteenth. The eighth and the twenty-second, redoubt to your normal meetings. If you do it on the fifteenth, then you're gonna have to set it. You might as well set an interview date on the seventeenth or eighteenth, but you're not gonna have time to give your people on interview time to get there, then you're already at your next meeting.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
We don't know how many applicants we're gonna have to interview or.
Well, that's, well, you need to look at them and be able to weed out weekend or whatever.
Right. Because I think we're probably gonna have to extend Belinda's anyway. Yeah, we're gonna have to. And I just thought fifteenth was a media day. I, let's just advertise, advertise it till the eighth, or, I guess we can go till the twenty-second, I don't care. And then we will have to set up an interview process in March then. Let me decide. February twenty-seventh, then I'll make it February twenty-second then. Yeah, end the application date.
At the end of the business date, the applications must be in this office, correct?
Correct.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, we're just gonna have to put extension on yours at the next meeting.
If you're willing.
If you're willing.
See if I show up.
I don't know, we have advertised for deputy clerk two after, I guess we got a vote. Yeah, we gotta move.
And the second for the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
No.
Einzire?
Yes.
And I think, uh, the next one's advertise for deputy clerk secretary, but I don't know right now if we wanna advertise for a full-time one. We might wanna, uh, table this until we have this on or different than that. Like, we need to, we need to discuss it more for one thing, or, or do you guys want a full-time one, or look into a part-time one?
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we could get, if they're full-time. All right, part-time one would be better, would get, uh-
Right, I mean, we just gotta, we'll have to bring it to the next meeting on the agenda. That's what we're gonna do.
Back when you were in there, you had just had part-time, correct?
Correct. Had a part-time secretary, yes, I did. She did end up working anywhere between twenty to thirty hours a week, depending upon how busy the office was and what time of year it was.
Well, and then whoever the full-time clerk is will have sick days or vacation or things too, so we need to-
I think you just table it and discuss it some more later on, or something, or-
Re, rethink it before we put it on the agenda type thing, I guess.
Well, I, I mean, if you're looking to, to change it, yeah, that would be, need to be a separate agenda item that we discussed at the, the next.
Next meeting, yeah.
At this point, you don't really know what you're advertising for, or what I hear.
Right, yeah. We need to clarify this better, what we actually do want.
Table that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be.
Would that, needs to be tabled in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm asking you to do, you need to table it by motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to table that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table, uh, deputy, uh, so we can, uh, describe it better.
Yes.
Till the eighth, you want a date on it? Till the eighth of February, next meeting, or?
Next meeting.
Yeah, January twenty-fifth.
Twenty, whatever, man.
Make it till the twenty-fifth, Dan.
We got a motion, make it twenty-fifth. Need a second.
I'll second.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?
No.
Einzire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a current list of job description and pay scale and benefits package available for someone to come in tomorrow to pick up?
I'm sure we do. It's-
If you're interested in the job? Do you have that decided?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we know what they're making. We, we'll look it up and put it in the advertisement. We haven't advertised yet.
But by approving it tonight, you've allowed it to come up to the public tomorrow for people to apply. I just was wondering if you're prepared for someone to come in tomorrow and ask for that information?
I guess we will discuss and whatever the wages are, we'll have to go by what's in.
We have a way for it.
We have a way for it, so we'll have to go by that. And we do have it, so we can show it to whoever. Yes, will it?
I do have the job description available, and through the employee handbook, it would apply to what position you apply for. Well, I have it ready and available, available tomorrow. I could do my best for anybody that's interested. I'm prioritizing items, and my priority tomorrow, or Friday, is going to be get these minutes typed up in a timely manner and in accurate manner, and to get the bills paid. But if anybody comes in, I would be willing to assist them in any way I, I can.
So, yeah, it's all in the, it's all in the code book, what the job descriptions are.
But I, I have heard discussions that you're not sure about the benefits that you wanna pay. Are those benefits available?
We didn't say that. We have never said anything in a statement that we, uh-
In one of your past meetings, you said you wanted to visit the benefits package.
Correct.
And I was wondering if that also is available, so that whoever's applying for the job would know what the benefits package and their salary would be, and you've answered the salary question.
And we'll have it ready before it gets in the newspaper. Yes, Kim.
Aren't you talking about part-time?
This is for the full-time clerk position. We tabled, uh,
Okay.
the deputy clerk until later.
Alright.
'Cause we're gonna discuss more about maybe having a part-time deputy clerk. Okay. That's all in ordinance, so we'll have it, it'll be, but we haven't advertised yet, so we will have it when we advertise. Okay, advertise for letter of interest for a new board of trustees member. Okay, we did that, right, up there when we did that. Okay. Do we need to actually- Okay, yeah, that was noticed, uh-
Correct, that there's a vacancy.
That there's a vacancy. But we need to, we need to advertise this, so we just need a motion to advertise this in newspapers. For letter of interest, yeah. Courier, it's, we're settled on, so.
You just want the local one?
Yeah. The Courier Times.
I'll make a motion to advertise for the board of trustees member, and Courier.
I'll second.
Les? Einzire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Okay, we have here, it says executive session. We're not gonna do that. This is just a, uh, we've had talk of having possibly a state audit. We're gonna have to have permission from the board to do that if we desire to call the state in here for an audit. If you guys wanna discuss that.
Have you talked to Bob about anything?
I did, I did, and they're not done with their year-end audit. They will be back Monday, and I need to talk to you about that too, 'cause you're closed, closed on Monday, and that's what we want, so they're not being disturbed the whole time. They're trying to get this audit finished up.
And I will not be prepared to assist them if they need any information.
What's that, Monday?
I won't be available. It's a day off.
Yeah, uh, we'll have to have, uh, one of us or two of us here for, if anybody's willing to.
That's the reason for a state audit.
There's a lot of questions, Jim, on different things. There's a lot of people asking questions, and if we can't satisfy them, all we may have to call a state audit.
Well, if they have complaints, there's complaint forms that need to be signed, so we can follow through on them.
Okay, Jim.
That's, that's procedures.
That's fine.
Oh, you gotta follow them or not?
Yeah, we are, Kenny. We will.
We need them signed, so we can follow up on.
I have a question. Um, is this state audit going to cost us money? Do we have to pay for now a second audit?
If we do this, if we do this, or not said, we are doing.
I'm just asking.
Yes. Yeah, it'll cost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've had experience with, uh, year-end audits, and your accountant is very capable, and if something doesn't match, they will be the first-
That's where we're leaning on right now, is our-
To know, and so their answer should really, um, give you all the information that you would need.
That's where we're looking right now. Our auditors are gonna look into some extra things, a little deeper, a little more clearer, so it wasn't gonna cost the city to have a state audit. Hopefully, we won't have to. It's just on there in case we do have to.
Could you name publicly some of the complaints or some of the questions that are before the board right, I mean, they don't seem to be before the board right now, but can you hear about those complaints?
You will be able to hear about some of them soon. They'll be made public. Not right this time.
So you don't have any of the signed complaint forms at this time?
Yeah, we have some stuff going on with the state right now, so, but we're not doing a state audit. Our auditors, RJ Myers is working on that for us, so. So, no. We will let people know whatever's wrong. It will be public knowledge.
Well, as far as the public, what, are we looking at thousands of dollars that are missing? Are we looking at equipment that's missing?
No, yeah. That's why we are looking into it.
But what, I don't know what brought about the questioning of the accounting. That's what we're asking for.
Just some questions as we've been looking through things. We're just checking for the public's interest.
You cannot voice those questions to the public right now?
No, because we don't have facts right now. We're gonna get facts. We're going through our accountants to do that.
Was there anything that raised a red flag through the budget process?
There's some things that did, but that is not right now into a discussion.
My question is just, is the audit a normal thing that usually comes up?
Yeah, we're in a hearing.
Is this, are you in a normal audit?
Yes, we're in a hearing audit. Okay, balance of accounts.
That would fall to me. I have been officially in the office for thirteen days, and before I clocked in this morning, it was less than sixty dollars of time. I have the bank statements on my desk. I did not have time to complete them without going into overtime. So I did not complete them, but I will have them available upon your request, or at any time. If anybody wants to come in and check the bank accounts, you're welcome to. It's public information.
Is that all you?
That's all I have for that account.
Water bank projects, turtle face, they're moving. Other than that, it's a bad situation, I know.
All I have to say is those guys are really right when they speak to one another.
I mean, they, they was out working Sunday when it was nice, so that, that helps.
Probably get it done, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I guess, Linda, you spoke what you had to say. Trustees report. Jim?
I don't have any.
Okay, we need a-
I'm not supposed to hear and manage.
Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Einzire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Les?